Public hearing, I guess we gotta do this. Public hearing is closed. Citizens comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the board on any matter, whether or not it is posted on the agenda. The board is not permitted to take action or discuss any comments made to the board at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. The board will hear the comments on a specific agenda item prior to the board addressing those items. You may speak up to four minutes or the time limit determined by the president or presiding officer. To speak during this item, you must complete the speaker's form. That includes the topics of your statement. Citizens' comments should be limited to matters over which the board has authority. Lori, I do have one that you've handed me. John, please step forward. Is it Dozier? Dashier? I couldn't quite read the last name.
I think you got it right.
Okay, so if you would, state your name once again and your address. And I think it said, "Charges of vacant house" is the issue.
My name is John Dozier, and I've been a resident of Trophy Club since 1995. Raised my family here and grandkids. I apologize upfront that I don't think it really needed to come to the board because it could have been taken care of earlier, in my opinion. However, on February 11th, my house on Three Paint Rock Court caught on fire because of a squirrel in the attic, right before the freeze that we had. Gary Conklin, chief of the fire marshal, was there, and we determined it was done by a rodent. Since that time, we found another place to live in Trophy Club at 10 Monterey Court. Shortly thereafter, I came to the mud and canceled all utilities, you know, like trash, water, and all of that. And I thought showing up in person would be a good way to stop that. I started getting bills every month, and I thought maybe they were just correcting, you know, the previous bills, you know, that might have come up after the fact. And I kept getting bills and bills, and there has no water been turned on at that house during rebuilding of our house. And no electricity. They've been doing rebuilding with generators powered by gas. And so I started thinking, why are we still getting water bills from Three Paint Rock Court? And so I came, you know, and I gave them the new address that we were in to start charging us for 10 Monterey Court. And they did. They started doing that, but I was also getting bills from Three Paint Rock Court. At first, it was a hundred and something and $192 or whatever. Then it ended up being $65.42 for the next months, you know, three months. And I was just, help me understand why I'm getting charged for water bills and trash pickup and all this, that I am no longer living there. And I have proof of that. You know, you can drive by the house right now and see porta-potties and trash bins and all that. So I came back down here a couple of days ago, and I presented the last bill for Paint Rock. And I've never missed a bill with mud, ever, in all these years, except maybe one I was laid on because I was out of town. And so now, I came over here and talked to the secretary about it, and she said, "Well, we will forgive your last bill." And I said, "Well, I'd like to have a refund on all the other bills I've been paying, you know, for the last few months," which would probably end up to be about $600 or $700. And so I just don't quite understand why I didn't get much help here, you know, you know, standing out there. And that's why I'm saying, I wish I wasn't even here, you know, taking your time on something like this, but I just don't think it's fair, you know? So I would like to have a refund, you know, on the, and I think there's a way to chase that down. And so that's basically, and the lady at the mud, she said, "Well, probably was the sprinkler system." And I go, "Sprinkler system hadn't been on since February." You know, that doesn't make sense. So I'm just here to form a complaint and see if there's anything we can do about that. Six or $700 is not going to break me, but I just don't think it's fair, and I wanted to lodge a complaint about that.
Okay, thank you, John, for coming tonight. Again, since it's not on the agenda, we can't comment on it, but we've heard you, we've heard the comments, and certainly we'll take that back and have the team look into it.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. Okay, reports and updates. One staff reports, capital improvement projects, water operations report, wastewater systems reports, and finance reports. Alan.
Good evening, directors. I have a few updates for you. The waterline interconnect project, we did receive the release of escrowed funds from TCEQ earlier last week or this week. So that approval process went quicker than we anticipated. We have an anticipated start date of 10-18, so everything's moving forward with that, and that is a six-month project, weather permitting. So hopefully by March, we'll have that project wrapped up and completed. So by next month's meeting, if y'all see dirt turning or people walking around, survey stakes, y'all will know and understand that that's part of that project. Also, I'd sent you all the smoke testing report, and if you all have not ever seen those before, I was extremely impressed because this was supposedly our worst area within the district, and the report showed very, very minimal or minor repairs, which I was extremely surprised by. Out of those, might correct me if I'm wrong, but we had roughly 49 areas that needed to be repaired or CCTVed, about 85% or 80% of those have been done. I think there was about 11 repairs left to be made, which are manholes. And there was one point repair on the main itself, and it was about two-foot-long section that's going to have to be dug up. So again, very impressive report. Gives me more optimism moving forward with our next few years. We did finally get our sanitary sewer overflow initiative agreement back from TCEQ, which our smoke testing annually will fall in line with that. So I have a consultant that I've worked with in the past and did this year's project for us, that I'm probably going to bring in a master services agreement to the next meeting to go directly with him and help us work through that 10-year or less annual project. But it was very good. Staff did an excellent job of going out and working with, there were two residents that had some smoke identified within their homes. They notified them as well. So they've done a bang-up job. A lot of it is broken caps, so they were able to see during our last heavy rainfall events that the pumps, it remained with one pump running and didn't have to kick on a second pump, which it worked as intended. Our computerized maintenance management system, staff has been working to get that implemented, and they've already had training, and they're working on some final tweaking of that system right now, but hope to go live October 11th. So as part of that, right now, I currently send a weekly report to all the board of directors. What I would like to do is transition from that weekly report and include that data and some of our computerized maintenance management software data in a monthly format, kind of build upon our current monthly report, but take the data that's been in a weekly format and do more of a monthly report. Peak day, peak flow, you'll still see the peak day for the month, but you'll see the totals and quantities, but instead of seeing a number that is a 52 work orders, just as an example, you'll see what those 52 work orders were for, whether it's customer service, meter replacement, complaint, flushing, water quality testing, whatever it may be. So if y'all are in agreeance with that, I'd like to try to start working on transitioning over to a monthly report instead of doing that weekly minor snippet. Also.
I favor the weekly. Of course, because a monthly report with the additional information is going to be more volumous, and I would like to have seen more in the week, just more in the weekly report.
And we can still provide that as part of the monthly format.
Well, I'm just saying, when you do it monthly, you're going to be getting, you're adding more information anyway. So rather, let's say you add 100 line items on the monthly report. If you do it weekly, then you'd only be adding 20 line items per week, give or take.
Is there a way to continue the weekly report as it looks now, but once a month, add the more detail that you're talking about here?
We can do that. Again, our reports are so flat that it's, I don't really understand the weekly report, but we can still send that out if y'all want that. I mean, it's not, it's not, it's not that time-consuming. It's just, instead of me sending it out on a weekly basis, if I just put the peak day for the month, peak effluent, number of work orders, how they were spent, that's what I'm used to sending out and seeing.
Yeah, so really what my suggestion was, three weeks are going to remain the same. On week four, for example, it gets more detail to what you're talking about.
Well, right now, right now, the way it's set up is it's per week, so that week may not fall up with a calendar month. Everything that we do operationally falls on a calendar month, so it doesn't matter which day of the week it's on.
I think we're talking semantics here. All I'm suggesting is, three weeks out of four, the report will be the same that we see today. And the fourth week, whatever that is, will be a little bit more detailed to what you're talking about adding. Is that, am I?
Not really, because the report I'm going to give you on a monthly basis is calendar-based. What you're getting now is a Monday or a Sunday-through-Mondday scenario. It's just a request. If y'all want to continue to see it, then y'all give me that directive, and we'll do so, and I'll leave the reports as they are right now. It's just a suggestion. This computerized maintenance management software is going to start computating all of this data that we do on a daily basis for us. I was going to try to kick out a little bit better information and do it on a monthly basis, but.
Well, maybe we can do this. Why don't we leave it as it is for now? And then, once we see one or two of these monthly reports and the detail of it, then we can revisit it.
I like the weekly data because it gives me a chance to watch the peaks on the water and watch the peaks on the sewer throughout the week. For example, I noticed this, the week report that you've got today, that you sent out today, actually, the sewer processing is down. It's unusual to see the sewer processing below 900 MGD, and it was down to 800 and something. So I just, you know, I find that interesting, you know?
We'll do that.
It's, you know, it's an opportunity to get a feeling for what's going on in the operation without coming in and walking up and down the hallway.
Also, the website, if y'all had a chance to go out and take a look at the website and see what you thought. I know that there were some issues with getting into the record side of it. We've added some different, or some additional licenses through Laserfish on that. The problem was, is that we only had five licenses, so all five of us could have been in there at one time, and it locked you out. So we added five more in there, which should help with that. If for any reason y'all see any kind of issues with that, just let Lori know, and we can always add those in. So other than that, don't have any other updates for you this month.
Any questions of Alan? Okay. Consent agenda. All matters listed in the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the board of directors and will be enacted by one motion. There's not a separate discussion of these items. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Two, consider and act to approve consent agenda. A, August 21st, August 2021 combined financials, and B, August 16th, 2021 regular meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
I move to accept the consent agenda as is.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. Vice President Chapman, seconded by Kelly, to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Regular session. Three, consider and act regarding adoption of resolution number 2021-0920A, as in apple, approving budget for fiscal year 2022. Dr. Rose.
I move to approve resolution number 2021-0920A of Trophy Club Municipal Utility District Number One of Denton and Tarrant Counties, Texas, adopting a budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2021, and ending September 30th, 2022.
Have second?
I'll second.
Kelly, quite Kelly first, so you've heard the motion by Director Rose, seconded by Kelly. Discussion? All those in favor? There's your hand. It is unanimous. Item four, consider and take appropriate action to adopt rate order number 2021-0920A, as in apple, amending water and sewer rates and setting an effective date of October 1, Kelly, you look ready. You look.
Can you pull your microphone, please, Kelly?
I'm not going to do it. I'm not making a noise.
Oh, okay. Bill?
Okay, I'll do them. Okay, I move to adopt rate order number 2021-0920Alpha, amending water and sewer rates and setting an effective date of October 1st, 2021.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Second, okay. You heard the motion and the second by Director Rose, seconded by Kelly. Questions? Bill?
Actually, there's no amendment to the sewer side of that equation. We can leave it that way. It's just going to bring it back in. I mean, but there were no amendments to the sewer rates, if I remember correctly.
It was only the water, is what you're saying?
Only the water.
Okay.
So if you'd like a new motion, I'll redo the motion.
Okay, why don't you redo the motion?
Okay. I move to adopt rate order number 2021-0920A, amending water rates and setting effective date of October 1st, 2021.
I'll second.
Okay, so you've heard Bill revised motion, seconded by Kelly. Questions? All those in favor? Raise your hand. It is unanimous. Item five, consider and act regarding order number 2021-0920B, as in Bravo, fixing and levying Trophy Club Municipal Utility District One debt service rate and operations and maintenance tax rate for the 2021 tax year.
Go ahead. You got it? Go ahead, take it.
Okay. I move to adopt order number 2021-0920Bravo, levying Trophy Club Municipal Utility District Number One debt service tax rate at .03489 per $100 of taxable value and maintenance tax rate at .07099 per $100 of taxable value for the 2021 tax year, and amend the Orders Section 2 reference to the 2022 tax year to state 2021 tax year.
I'll second.
Second. Okay, the motion is on the table, seconded by Director, motion by Secretary-Treasurer Castigay, seconded by Director Rose. Questions? All those in favor? It is unanimous, once again. Thank you. Item number six, consider and act to approve amendment to district information form, including notice to purchaser form.
I move to approve the amendment to district information form, including notice to purchaser form, showing the total Trophy Club Municipal Utility District Number One tax levy of .10588 per $100 of taxable value.
Okay. That was 10, .10588?
Tony.
Tony has something.
Okay, Tony.
Just comment, the amendment to the district information form, rather than have two separate amendments and record two separate documents in the real property record, we have one proposed amendment, which is on page 95 of your PDF. And in addition to reciting the tax rate that the board just approved and the corresponding notice to purchaser, it also has a corrected boundary description and map to it. So just to clarify, it does more than the tax rate. We learned that there were two parcels included in last year's boundary description that should not have been included, and so this amendment will also correct that.
Right, that's exhibits B and C of the boundary maps, right?
Yes.
Okay. So it's a tax rate of .0, 0.10588 for $100 and the two boundary descriptions.
Okay, and I'll amend my motion to include the amendment to the two boundary descriptions, if the second agrees.
Okay, so you heard the amended motion. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Raise your hand. It is unanimous. Thanks for that clarification, Tony. Item seven, consider and act to adopt resolution 2021-0920Bravo, approving 2021 tax rule for Trophy Club Municipal Utility District Number One. Oh, I'm sorry. Bill?
I move to approve resolution 2021-0920Bravo, approving the 2021 tax rule for Trophy Club Municipal Utility District Number One. The board of directors approved tax rate of .10588 per $100 of assessed value being imposed on each property included on the certified appraisal rolls for the district for the 2021 tax year, totals $2,096,089 tax levy. The board hereby declares that the appraisal rolls with amounts of tax entered shall constitute the district's tax rule for the 2021 tax year.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Director Rose moved, seconded by Vice President Chapman. Discussion? All those in favor? It is unanimous. Item eight, consider and act regarding annual review of the district investment policy and investment strategies, including A, adopt order number 2021-0920C, approving amended and restated investment policy, including the district's investment strategy and appointment of investment officers. Director Rose.
I move to adopt order number 2021-0920C, Charlie, approving amended and reinstated investment policy, including the district's investment strategies and appointment of investment officers, Alan Formanton and Stephen Krocik.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion is in front of you by Director Rose, seconded by Kelly. Comments? Questions? All those in favor? Raise your hand. It is unanimous. Nine, consider and act to adopt resolution number 2021-0920C, cash reserve policy. Bill?
I move to adopt resolution number 2021-0920C and move the $1,245,972 in undesignated reserves to the rehabilitation and replacement reserves.
I'll second.
Director Rose moves, seconded by Kelly. Discussion?
I just wanted to briefly mention that what that does is it leaves the rehabilitation replacement reserves $53,000 short of being fully funded, and across all the funding types, our total underfunding of all reserve types is $411,000 approximately, so.
So what was that, $411,000, Bill?
Well, it's actually, it's the underfunding of all the reserve types across the categories, and it's on page 166 in your packet, if you wanted to look at that. But that's the, that's the basic picture, and my thought was, since the R and R was so low, we'd just go ahead and bring it up this year. It'll still be a little bit short, but it makes the picture look much, much better across the board.
Pretty big here.
Yeah, fantastic. Once again, outstanding work by the finance department and staff. Thank you.
All right, do we vote on that? I can't remember.
No, we haven't voted.
Okay, so Director Rose moved and seconded by Mark. Further comments? Questions?
Not a material question. I'm just wondering, is it really necessary to approve the policy itself each year? Because I don't think we're changing the policy. We're just transferring funds.
The policy requires that it be approved biannually. And so, biannually. So I think what we've fallen into, I think we did it last year, re-approved it last year simply just to get into a sequence, and it was back on again. But we need, it's not necessarily, unless we wanted to make a change, I mean, if you put it on the packet, if you include it in the packet, then we can talk about it. And if we need to make a change, make a change, I guess, if somebody wants to make a change to it. But the critical item, from my perspective, for the board at this point, is to take action. It's our one chance every year to take action to work those reserve balances and maybe even change them, should we need to change the size of the bucket.
But your question, Tony, is, we're not changing the policy. We're changing.
It's almost going forward whether the agenda item should be to approve the transfer of funds for reserve, something along those lines, because that seems more accurate to what we're doing than.
You're not changing the policy. You're changing, yeah, something within that.
We're authorizing the transfer of funds to fund reserves. Not a big deal, but it just seems more accurate about what we're doing.
True, but also then, there's a requirement within the policy to look at it every two years, so if you, I mean, if you keep track of that.
Maybe we do both under a general category about discussion and action regarding district reserve funds.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Good point. Okay. Thank you. All right, so Bill moved. We had a second from Mark. No further discussion. All those in favor? Raise your hand. It is unanimous. Item 10, consider and take appropriate action to approve master client agreement and statement of work with M3 Networks for Information Technology Services and Cyber Security for fiscal year 2022, and authorize the general manager to execute the contract. So I did have a, you have a question, Mark? I had a question.
No, I was going to.
No, I was gonna make-
Okay, well, we'll do that, and I'll bring up a question, so.
I'd like to move that we approve the master-client agreement and statement of work with M3 Networks for Information Technology Services and Cyber Security for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, and authorize the general manager to execute the contract for an amount of sixty-six thousand, not to exceed the amount of sixty-six thousand two-hundred-and-forty dollars.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion from Vice President Chapman, seconded by Kelly. Before we vote, I do have a question. So Alan, walk us through, aren't we paying most, is this, are we paying most of that upfront for the first year, or all of it?
Correct.
And then how does it work after that, year after year?
So this is your, this is our annual fee. Typically, the last three years, if I'm not mistaken, it's been roughly sixty-one thousand dollars. The reason we're redoing this agreement and contract is because we added in some advanced endpoint protection, dark web monitoring, advance, advanced spam filtering, detection, staff testing and phishing, because we had a potential cybersecurity scare, and so we asked if there was anything additional that we could do to protect ourselves as far as the district. So the overall cost annually is increasing by roughly four thousand, five thousand dollars, Stephen, and-
Five thousand, right.
Correct. So while the dollar amount's increasing, we went ahead and revised the contract, and we're now on a year-to-year basis.
Does that include a penetration test at least once a year?
Yes, that's the staff testing and phishing.
Okay.
And they have the dark web monitoring, which I don't believe we had that, and then they have, is it the Blackpoint Cyber and Threat Locker? I think they have that running behind the scenes as well. My understanding is that it will be additional to what they have been running in the past.
Sounds good.
I have, I have a question on, on the structure of the motion. This is not to exceed an amount. Are there variables in that contract which would cause it to exceed that amount? I'm trying to remember from last time we did this motion.
Only if it was a work order basis. So if there's anything above and beyond that's not included in our annual agreement, then it would be additional cost. So if we had, let's say, let's say we had a one-off little project that we wanted to do, we would have to pay additional service fees for those. So the majority of your endpoints, your annual coverages, any kind of setting up, monitoring, call center, behind-the-scenes activities, support during the meetings is an additional cost. So that's, that's an example of above and beyond.
So my question is, is it appropriate to have the dollar amount in it?
Since it renews each year, and it's technically the same contract, it will definitely exceed the dollar amount you mentioned, so I would recommend that the motion just be to approve the master client agreement as presented.
Without the dollar, yeah.
Because this acts as a similar contract as a master services agreement with our consultant.
Okay, I'll just say, I'll amend my motion to drop the, not to exceed.
And approve the statement of work too, please, as part of the motion.
You got that, yeah. And I'll, I'll agree with the removal.
So the removal, so the revised motion by Vice President Chapman, removing the sixty-six to forty. Bill, you're seconding that revised motion?
I agree.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? It is unanimous. Okay, we flew through that pretty well. Executive session pursuant to section five-five-one point zero-seven-two of Texas Open Meetings Act, the board may deliberate to purchase, exchange lease or value of real property if deliberation is an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the governmental body in negotiations with a third person. A, purchase of easements or real property interest required for access to wastewater lift station number one, and twelve deliberations pursuant to section five-five-one point zero-seven-four, A as in alpha one of the Texas Open Meetings Act regarding appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment of duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee or general manager annual review. It is seven oh-five, we are entering executive session. Eight forty, eight thirty-five, and we are now convening back into regular session. Thirteen, consider and take appropriate action, excuse me, regarding approval of amendment to employee, employment agreement between the district and the general manager. Mr. Rose, I think you have a motion?
I move to approve an amendment to the general manager's contract agreement as discussed in executive session, and authorize the president to execute the document after legal review and approval.
I'll second.
Okay, the motion is before you with amending the general manager employment agreement, seconded by Secretary Treasurer Castingley. Any discussion? All those in favor? Show your hand. It is unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, future agenda items. Anything anybody has on, that they can think of that we need to cover off?
I have something, but I don't think I need to put on future agenda. One of the things that's in the back of my mind is I would like to look at solarization, I think's what I would call it, of a solar source for the, for, to offset our electrical use or replace our, you know, our electrical uses. I've seen some plants around that have solar that they're using. You basically put your, you build a solar plant, it goes into the main system, and then you just draw back out of the main system without, we wouldn't have batteries or anything like that. But it's, it's a way to offset costs, and I just kind of wonder-
For the, for what? For-
Well, we spend ten, twelve thousand dollars a month on electricity. So if I had a solar, if I had land surface, which we do have, and we've had some public-private partnership to put solar on that, generates, it would be a cost savings for the district if it was structured correctly. The question is, is there a way to do that or not?
Well, and, yeah, and then the cost, and the, you know, what's the payback over time, and-
Oh, yeah, the whole dynamic, but it's, okay, some others-
It's on agenda, so we don't talk about it tonight.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Anything else? All right, before we adjourn, let's talk about future meeting dates, if we can, for November, December. I think we're okay for the month of November, but let's look, if we can, at December. December bumps up into Christmas, I believe.
Are we okay for October?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, October is still fine, correct?
The eighteenth?
Yeah, we're, October eighteenth. November is set for-
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth, which is the third, we're fine there. I think the issue becomes, then December is the week of the twentieth, which is Christmas week. So I think we talked about moving it to week before.
Thirteenth.
The thirteenth? Either the thirteenth, or was there a better day?
We'd rather move it to between Tuesday and Thursday in that week, if possible. How much week?
So we're talking either fourteen, fifteen, or sixteen?
Yes.
Okay.
That'd be available on the fourteenth or fifteenth, but not the sixteenth.
Okay.
Fourteenth?
Uh, fourteenth, yeah. Kelly, you okay with the fourteenth? Okay.
Tuesday, December fourteenth.
Tuesday, December fourteenth.
But you will be over by then, so it's not a factor.
All right. All right, so we got future agendas, we got the future dates. All right, it is eight thirty-nine. We're adjourned.